...under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't move.
Motion made and seconded at the Communications 1 through 5, the file that's accepted and filed that's submitted.
No, Mayor.
Oh, that's the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
Soon to be another grandfather that happens to...
Tomorrow, probably. Either tomorrow or the next day. I know last council meeting she was on her way, but it was a false alarm, but they're gonna make it happen this time. So, with that, motion made and seconded on the minutes of previous meeting, is there a special meeting?
No.
No, sir.
Just a regular meeting. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do we have a blanket motion?
Don't move.
Any council member care to pull any communication on blanket motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Move for adoption. Second.
Just by way of explanation, motion made and seconded to support Resolution Number One in the special call. Essentially, that would put us on record as supporting Amendment Two. Amendment Two would give the legislature the authority to set a procedure for issuing long-term general obligation bonds in support of economic development as defined by super projects. So, it would only allow the legislature to support these via what's defined as a super project, and that's those jobs that would, those projects that would create more than 500 jobs and a minimum of $500 million in capital investment. With that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Remove for adoption.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Remove for adoption.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Remove for adoption.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, second reading.
Move for adoption. Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two?
Please read it.
This is an honest waiving form of bidding requirements for the purchase of two tractor trucks for the Department of Public Works, first reading.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Item number two? Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna have, and I hope Mr. Gorman, it's not listed here, and I've neglected to do that, to make a presentation on our final recommendations with regard to our master plan. I know a lot of you are here, some of you are here, let's put it that way, to talk about the public hearing on our pit bull ordinance. I'm gonna take a little liberty and was gonna ask Mr. Gorman to go first, but I'm gonna ask y'all to wait now because I know that we've got at least one witness that I think time is a little bit of an urgent consideration. So, I'm gonna go ahead, Bob and Jason, and ask y'all to wait just a little bit. I will ask you, I'm gonna convene this public hearing on the pit bull legislation. Let me tell you, if I could, how I intend to move this legislation forward. There are several amendments that have been recommended. I know that there's discussion that's been had. We had a fairly lengthy discussion during the last council meeting. So, we will have the public hearing now to listen to anybody. I'm gonna ask those who made comments last time, if you could let those who didn't speak first, I'm not gonna say that you only have one bite of the apple, but I am gonna ask you to make your comments brief. I'm gonna ask you, if you would, limit them to three minutes. I'm gonna do one side and the other side. So, in favor of restricting pit bulls and opposed to the legislation, and go back and forth until one side exhausts itself, and then, you know, let the other side go on until they finish, we will not deal with any amendments this time. We will consider the comments of those that are out in the audience as well as anyone else between now and the next council meeting. If you have an amendment or you think that something ought to be done to improve the legislation, I'm gonna suggest that you, you know, make a suggestion to one of your council members or to me, and the city attorney will help us draft those, that we will adopt whatever amendments, if any, and deal with simply amendments at the next council meeting. And then, we won't have any real public comment hearing as such because we'll just be dealing with the council adopting amendments. And then, the final meeting, which will be the first meeting in November, will essentially vote on the legislation, but we will, at least in my opinion, that's obviously subject to the council's concurrence, have a public hearing and then vote on the legislation immediately after that public hearing. So, with that, unless there's an objection by the council, that would be my suggestion as to how we go forward. In light of that, if no council member has any comments, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and the first comments I'll ask for is anyone supporting, and I won't say the legislation, because just supporting this community, restricting the breed known as, or referred to as pit bulls and all the attenuating meaning. So, I'll open the floor.
Hello, is, what I would like to tell the people here is that I've been on both sides with pit bulls.
You need, first of all, we need to say your name and where you live, where you're addressed.
Okay. I'm Kristy Ketcher. I live at 621 Mill Street, North Little Rock, Arkansas, 72117. And I wanted to come here tonight to tell everybody that I've been on both sides. I wanna tell you the good side. I had a gator pit bull that was one year old. This dog slept with me. This dog was like a family member. And suddenly, last night at 7:30, my dog bit this little girl over here that's two years old. And I want to let you know that if I wouldn't have had three grown men there, that this little girl would have been dead. It took three grown men to get the dog off. I loved my dog. I want y'all to know that, I did, I loved him. But I'm here to try to convince you guys that this could have been death. And I'm on both sides because I also had to put my dog away. But then, I have a step granddaughter right here that I had to watch last night get 44 This is Autumn Ketcher, and I want you to look at this. This is 44 stitches in her. And this is just a snip. This is not a bite. This is a snip. And this happened from the dog I loved. He was a part of my family. And guys, if you own pit bulls, please take it in consideration because the next time, it could be death. When this dog caught blood from this child, he was like an alligator. He went crazy. He went wild, obnoxious. This dog usually minds me. I mean, he was a great dog, and I really hate what I had to do. But guys, please take it in consideration, and I hope that I have done some good here tonight because I love my dog too, and I thought this would never happen. And it did last night. And I just wanted to come here to tell you because I want to save somebody because I feel that I was very lucky in what I, what happened, and just with these 44 stitches with this two-year-old little girl. And the next time, it could be death, and I don't want it to happen to a pit bull owner because I was one, and I was on the other side before 7:30 last night. No, you cannot take my baby from me. But then, when he got my baby, now I realize, these folks are telling the truth. These pit bulls can turn on you in an instant. It took three grown men. And that's all I basically have to say, and I really hope that I have helped in this place tonight to convince people of what these dogs can really do because I owned one and I loved him dearly until I seen exactly what he could do. And please, guys, just take it in consideration if you own a pit bull. Please, I loved mine too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, we'll take that as in support of the legislation, and now we're gonna look for opposition. Are you speaking and opposed? You need to state your name and where you live.
I'm Janine Neal, and I live in North Little Rock, Arkansas, and I spoke at the last meeting. I'm the lady that addressed you as a dog trainer. I'm also here to be against the proposal, be breed specific, and Little Rock Dog Training Club is where I'm a member. They've been established since 1950, and I've been a member there for 12 years. The Little Rock Dog Training Club has taught all breeds of dogs, purebred, mixed breeds. We will help anybody in educating and working with their dogs. The reason that I'm also here once again as a dog trainer is the last two weeks I have learned a lot about what the public views as a pit bull, and I feel that I'm here to help educate. What I found out by people approaching me on this issue and as me approaching people, the public thinks a pit bull is any breed that resembles a bully-looking dog. There is four breeds on this amendment. There's just not one breed. There's four breeds on here, okay? From what this lady said, it sounded like a pit bull, I, that's what she said, bit her dog, okay? A pit bull is one specific breed of dog, just like a collie is a collie and a sheltie is a sheltie. It's not a miniature collie. A doberman is a doberman and a miniature pincher is not a miniature doberman. They're their own breeds. A pit bull is its own breed. The second dog that you have on this list is American Staffordshire Terrier. It is not a pit bull. It may resemble a pit bull. It's an AKC-recognized breed that has been bred for over 60 years as its own breed. It competes in agility and it competes in obedience, and it is a show dog that goes to Westminster. This breed has been bred as a companion dog. That's it. It has been bred as a companion dog, not as a fighting dog, okay? The second, third breed you have on here is a Staffordshire Bull Terrier. Does anybody even know what a Staffordshire Bull Terrier is besides the people here that like the bully breeds? Do you guys know how much that dog weighs? What is the size of a Staffordshire Bull Terrier?
One minute.
Okay. Staffordshire Bull Terrier is a dog that is 24 to 38 pounds. It is shorter than your knee. It has only been recognized by the AKC since 1974. We could not find any recorded bites of any sort on the Staffordshire Bull Terrier. Why is it on the list? What has it done? The last dog on there is American Bulldog. It's only been recognized by the UKC since 1999. Surely, in that short period of time, the American Bulldog has not done that much damage since 1999. People don't know what they are. They don't know what the American Bulldog is. Where is it recorded on that? There is a few recorded. We looked it on the internet, very few. Now, what are we trying to ban? Pit bull and anything looks like it? Or are we trying to truthfully ban one breed? And once again, I am not for breed specific. I am so sorry what happened to this little girl, but I know as a dog trainer, it could happen with any breed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And anyone is also welcome to write and present any kind of written material. Ms. Whitby will ensure that the council receives copies of whatever you might want to submit, so you're welcome to do that also. Yes, sir, if you'll tell me your name and where you live.
Good evening, my name is John Taylor. Excuse me, I live at Seven Mill Place. And I retired and moved to Arkansas, bought a house, got rid of my old shooting. Now, knowing I was moving into a house next door to, people have three pit bulls and they bark. It's not time to get dark till 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. But thanks to a young lady, I got that thing, that's been taken care of. But this young lady, she is blessed. Normally, when a dog tastes blood, there's a, in Johnson County, Kansas, where I'm from, there's been, pits have killed one adult and one child, and they have abandoned that dog out of Kansas. And those dogs have no business been around kids. Excuse me, they don't like to be pet, hit on the head, and when a child, family, baby don't know, and first thing you know, that dog's gonna attack, then it's too late.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Jesse Kendrick. Live on West Knight Street. Think you know that neighborhood. I'll make it brief. I wrote it down to save you some time. I just wanna back the first-time lady up on the breed-specific legislation. It's been tried and put through in other places. It's never worked. There's whole countries that have tried to ban certain breeds of dogs, and it never works. The only people that ever suffer from this type of legislation, talking about anything besides dogs, are the people that are responsible. When you're talking about dogs, you're talking about people like me that buy a license every year, pay a $30 dog tax, which apparently gets us nowhere in North Little Rock. Also, my dogs are very well-trained animals that I trust. I think that anybody that has a big, strong dog should not ever let these dogs around children of any breed. I'll try and make it quick. Also, I wanna tell you that Grace is very uneducated on his proposal and is more than unfounded. It's unconstitutional. He's not, he is not the best judge of dog obedience or dog breeds, and like she said, he's listened to several breeds that he doesn't wanna deal with anymore as a dog catcher. Also, try again because we've already got stuff in place to help us with this. Other legislations, leash laws, Phil that got his dog bit a month ago, or three weeks ago, whatever it was, what happened to the owner? Does anybody know? Nobody, nobody knows. All we're worried about is, you know, his dog. Also, something else, you know, the Burns Park Dog Run, I think is one of the best ideas that we've had in a long, long time. I take full advantage of it. I see pit bulls and other bully breeds out there all the time. I have never, ever, in the dozens and dozens and dozens of times, seen a problem with him out there with responsible owners. I have seen dog fights out there with other breeds, and it was solely for the lack of training and obedience. And also, just one more thing, this is something that Mr. Grace refused to give to me that I got off the internet. The top 10 dog biters, or top five, rather, number one, Dalmatians. Number two, Chows. Number three, it's been in the last five years, it's been a tie between German Shepherd's Labs and Poodles. Number four, Pit Bull Terriers. And number five, it's always a toss-up between Dobies and Rotts. They've always been in this rotation. The pit bull's never been number one. It all comes down to responsibility. You have a kid in the room, big dogs are intimidated by small people. Even my dogs are that way. Also, some other breeds that have pit bull in them, Jack Russell Terrier, Patterdale Terrier, Catahoula, Boxer, and Boston Bulldog. Are you gonna ban those two? They're obviously vicious.
Thank you. You're welcome to submit anything in writing that you care. We sure appreciate it. Yes, sir, you're supporting the legislation?
Yes, I am. My name is Stan Layman, and I'm a neighbor of the gentleman whose dog is bed. It's been a month, and I've heard a lot of arguments for and against this thing. I've heard one person argue that these, that the cases involving these dogs were occurring in specific areas of cities among specific breeds, as if that somehow made it less of a problem. To that, I can only say though, while we may have low-value areas in this city, we do not have low-value people in these areas. A danger to some of us is a danger to all of us, and we just found out just how dangerous they can be. That child said more by being here than I ever said by being here three or four times. We've always argued that these breeds present a greater probability to harm the people in this city than other breeds, and that lowering that probability was the intent of this ban. In response to this, someone called in a radio show, and we've made plenty of those, stated that since statistically more serial killers were males below the age of 40, they should be banned too. I've also heard that if we ban these breeds, we might as well ban the other breeds, beagles and chihuahuas, because they also bite people. There's simply no comparison in the severity of the cases involving other breeds. We've not singled these breeds out. They have singled themselves out. After 10 years, neither Sherwood nor Marmell has added any more breeds to the list of dogs they've banned. This city council is made up of reasonable men and women, and banning breeds that account for so little damage to person and property would not be reasonable. This city has banned fireworks because of the probability of damage to person and property. We've banned our teenagers after certain hours. We've banned them from the streets simply because we thought something might happen, that the probability was greater that something might happen.
One minute.
But these cities, but this city has decided that there, these are reasonable restrictions placed on some of us for the good of all of us. Now, tomorrow night, in the City of McGee, Arkansas, the city council is also meeting to consider a pit bull ban. They'll hear from another mother. This was the mother of a five-year-old, whose son was attacked by a neighbor's pit bull within the last two weeks. This child has already undergone one surgery on his leg and faces additional surgery in the future. For some of you, this is a tough call. You have to balance the public safety interest against the rights of responsible dog owners. Those of us who support this ban feel we've made our case. We love this city. We live in this city because we like living in this city. If you reject this ordinance, we won't move. We won't take our business somewhere else. We will bow to the wisdom of the city council. We will still be here, but so will these dogs.
Thank you very much. Now, right now, that was supporting legislation. Anybody opposing legislation, if you're willing to speak of that, then it's your time. If not, you need to get, we're going back and forth, Howard.
Oh, back and forth?
Yeah, we're going back and forth.
When's the fourth going? I'll go after him then?
You're welcome, yeah. You just had a for the legislation, and now we've got opposed to the legislation, so we're alternating back and forth until whichever side runs out.
Good evening. Just wanted to say, my name's Brent Rogers, and I'm a property owner up in Park Hill. I was hoping that you guys had gotten the packets that we had sent out, trying to educate you a little bit about the breeds and deeds and things about that. Main thing I wanted to address is that the differences between the dogs, I'm an American Staffordshire Terrier owner. I've owned him for 17 years. Some of the other dogs on the ban, on your legislation, I really don't think is applicable. I'm more for the responsibility of the owners. Like everybody has said, I think this more comes down to enforcing some of the existing laws that we have, leash laws and responsibility for their dog's actions. I hate to hear anything like the poor little girl over there that happened. That was an attack by a gator pit bull, which is from a fighting bloodline. This, this type of dog is the type of dog that should not be bred. What is happening here is that we are doing this to these animals, and the animals are being prosecuted for, or the animals are being persecuted for what's happening. And unfortunately, on this particular bill, you've got three breeds that really, I don't think need to be on there. The Staffordshire Bull Terrier being one of them, and the American Staffordshire Terrier. Again, there are bad examples of every dog, but anyone who willingly brings a dog that's known to be a fighting bloodline dog into their home really needs to get their priorities straight personally. straight, personally. I would never own any dog that was out of a known fighting strain or anything like that. It's an unfortunate accident, and it happens, and I'm really sorry to hear about it, and the dog should be euthanized, and there should be some other types of fines imposed on whoever the owner of that dog was. Personally, that's what I think. The American Staffordshire Terrier was bred from the same bloodlines as the American Pit Bull Terrier was. The difference being that the American Pit Bull Terrier leaned more towards the fighting elements, and the American Staffordshire Terrier was bred for show, confirmation, companionship, and a family dog. If you guys read your packets...
One minute.
The breed standards that I sent out to you guys do mention that it's an excellent companion dog. The actual figures on American Staffordshire Terrier, American Staffordshire Bull Terrier, and American Bulldog is just minute compared to the American Pit Bull Terrier dog. I'm not for breed-specific banning, but something does need to be done to make these owners take responsibility and contain their dogs, and be financially, as well as criminally, liable for what their dogs do. And the normal dog owners and breeders and showers like we are, we show confirmation with our dogs, are going to be persecuted for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, support.
Mr. Mayor, City Council?
Can I look at this right here?
First thing I want to say is that, talk about breeding, going by breed never works. Well, it works in Marmel. It works in Jonesboro, it works in Mountain Dew, it works to some degree in Sherwood, and why wouldn't it work really here? Apparently, it's going to work...
We need your name, excuse me, a second.
My name's Howard Harper. I'm a North Little Rock resident, about 34 years, 3,800 Glen Mia Road. I live down the street from the, my neighbors down there got attacked by the dog, or their dog got attacked. But it does work in places. I think this legislation, if I'm correct, City Attorney was taken from the Marmel specifications, wasn't it? And it works very well there. I think that, you know, when people who spoke at the last ordinance, let's council meeting rather, I went outside and spent some time with about five or six of them. The five or six people I spoke to, none of them actually lived in North Little Rock. And so, I know they're free to speak, I don't want to deny that, but basically, they don't live here, they don't vote here. I think the next thing is that there's a byproduct for this legislation. One is, it may help police, because according to Mr. Grace, there's a fairly large percentage of the pit bull owners, either breeding them for fighting dogs, or having them to protect their operation for drug reasons and so on like that. This could give some teeth for the police and so on like, to be able to actually maybe see that there's, they haven't registered their dog, or the dog's not properly kept in the yard, something like this, that'll give them some reason to be able to go to those residents, and maybe it will do some good and eliminate the drugs, and maybe it will do some good in eliminating those who just raise it for breeding and fighting. I think the next thing is that, I feel sorry for the people that give up their dog. I mean, I've had all kinds of dogs, never the same kind of dog. I think at the same time, like the young man who lived here, lives here, his family lives here, and his mother lives here, his grandmother lives here last meeting, he talked about, about he'd moved, but actually, it doesn't ban his dog. It doesn't ban any of the owners of these dogs. If someone can come up with a better description, that would be reasonable. But at the same time too, that description came from Marmel, and has not been any griping from Marmel about having a problem with any other dogs.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're opposed to the legislation?
No, I am opposed definitely. I am Laverne Anderson from Bryant, Arkansas. I am Arkansas's only in-state delegate to the American Kennel Club, and I also a representative of the United Kennel Club. And both groups are diabolically opposed to breed-specific legislation. There's not a dog in any of the groups that somewhere along the line hasn't done damage to a child. We all grieve over children, that precious little baby there, having been attacked by a dog. But on, you look at all these angles on things, I have a 13-year-old niece bashed to death by one of her schoolmates, and you can't ban a complete list of schoolchildren because of one incident. These things happen. And no one wants to have a vicious dog. And the dogs that are on this list, well, just to give you an example, right now, we have seven of those terriers training in our different classes. I've been a specific trainer for 60 years. I've had tons of dogs under me. I have never had what is theoretically called a pit bull attack and do any damage in any of the classes. Education is the key word. We try to teach people to train their dogs. I'd be the first one to take a club and knock a dog in the head if it attacked a person, I really would. I just feel that that's the worst thing that can happen. It isn't the dog. That little dog comes into the world just like a baby. He knows nothing. He is taught by people to be mean, to be aggressive, and it isn't difficult to teach any breed. This little child that we're working with now, that a chihuahua tore its face all to pieces, and if you think a chihuahua can't do anything, you should see this child. These things happen. And I know my time is running away, and I want to be specific, but please legislate against these people. There are no laws in our state, in our cities, or anything, that do anything other than slap the wrist of the dog fighters. We don't want them in the dog world, and you certainly don't want them anywhere to where they can, their ills be put off onto people. So, please, don't have a breed-specific legislation like this is. And I thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is not, this is not an audience participation event. So, if you'll please, all on both sides restrain from doing anything other than giving attention to the person at the microphone. Yes, sir?
I am Richard Allen. I'm a practicing veterinarian here in North Little Rock, and I've been a resident of North Little Rock and practiced veterinary medicine in North Little Rock for 40 years. I represent the North Little Rock veterinarians, and we had a meeting a few days ago and talked specifically about this ordinance, and I have been asked to speak on this ordinance by these veterinarians. We support it in that it will help protect the public from individuals who abuse or otherwise, abuse and otherwise non-vicious animal. And we've spoken about, you know, what's the non-vicious, what's a vicious and what's a non-vicious animal? And making these into amendments to the public. We support these animals being forced to have their rabies vaccination, their city license, be registered, and spayed or neutered. We have issues with forcing these people to have insurance on these dogs, because, and I think I speak for the, not only for the veterinarians, but for the responsible dog-owning public, in that there is going to be instances when a person owns a dog, that if they have to have insurance on it, they're not going to be able to get it, and they are, you know, they're responsible pet owners. So, I think, I think there's going to be a problem there. I also would like to speak on Billy Grace's qualification. I know this has been mentioned. I consider Billy Grace to be qualified to make any judgment on a dog's temperament. I feel that the ordinance is aimed at fighting the influx of fighting dogs in the city of North Little Rock, and we are definitely against that.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I'm going to go ahead, it seems like we still got a line. There's one thing that I want to do, we've got another presentation, and I'm going to go ahead, since you've got some material to pass out, and go ahead and take you, and then we're going to have a presentation on the city's master plan, and then we'll come back to anybody that wants to comment after that presentation. So, go ahead, state your name and where you live.
Okay. My name is Kim Grandison, and I'm a resident of North Little Rock, the Bellwood community, and I own an American pit bull. I oppose this legislation for many reasons. I don't think it addresses the problem, which is in most cases irresponsible ownership. It's been proven unconstitutional in many courts. It's even been addressed by the U.S. Federal Department of Justice as unallowable, because it could rob people of disabilities with their, you know, for finding a specific dog for their needs. Because proper identification of what dogs would be included is difficult, if not impossible, it's been deemed as unconstitutionally vague, and has been found involved attacking of property without due process. I think that deeds and not breeds should be addressed. We have a serious problem with the over-reporting of pit bull attacks. An example is, there was a fatal attack by pit bull in Detroit. It was carried in 30 separate national newspapers, picked up by Fox News, CNN, and two British papers. Two weeks before that, a man was killed by a German shepherd, and it ran in the local paper. So, you know, no wonder, you know, people automatically, pit bull, oh, it's bad. That's not true. I have right here 25 different breeds of dogs that people mistake for pit bulls. I had a hard time finding the real one. I have studies that, you know, I've passed out, you know, he was passing out to everyone, if y'all could take a look at all that information that I've given you. I know that the AKC, the American Kennel Club, wrote a letter to Mayor Hayes on my behalf, and they offered their assistance in coming up with breed-specific, non-breed-specific legislation. They oppose it, you know, I know the veterinarian from North Little Rock, well, I have a report by the American Veterinary Medical Association that concludes, it's got sample legislation, and they believe that BSL, breed-specific legislation, is inappropriate and ineffective. You know, there are people here tonight that would help come up with a non-breed-specific dangerous dog law. What we need to do is address the real issue. You know, I feel bad for the little girl. I mean, I'm sorry. I have a pit bull, I trust my dog with my baby, but I don't leave my baby alone with that dog. I wouldn't leave it alone if it was a tiny, tiny dog. I don't let other people come over and the dog, you know, is running loose. That's not something you do. You know, I have reports on, you know, the temperament, and, you know, different things like that, genetics, canine genetics, basic canine science, says there's no scientific evidence to support a particular breed of dog is aggressive. If you ban a pit bull, then the people that are irresponsible can go get a different breed of dog, and this could just go on. And, you know, pretty soon, all these dogs, you know, will have this whole long list of dogs that are banned. You need to address the owners. It's the owner's responsibility for, to take care of that dog. You know, animals have no say. It's, the laws are for the people, and they're not for animals who have no say about the environment or the treatment that they have to endure.
Thank you very much. Let me just recess this public hearing for a few minutes. Mr. Gorman, where are you? Would you mind, excuse me for interrupting, you know, our plans and itinerary, but if you want to come to the microphone, Jason, and let us see what your thoughts are, and let me turn the floor over. As many of you know, we've been working with Bob in, in working on the city's master plan. He and his associate are in town to give us what they've looked to as the final recommendations from the time that they've spent with us, and Bob comes to us from having been fairly familiar with the local area, with the work that he's done on the River Market, and I can, needless to say, you know, I won't steal any of his thunder, but he's very excited about what we, what real estate we have, what opportunities we have. Bob, I'll turn the microphone over to you, and please take us through some of your work.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. Some of you may have been involved in some of our earlier presentations, just as a way of introduction, my name is Bob Gorman, and I'm with a company called MRA International, based in Philadelphia and Washington, D.C. My partner, Jason Spillerman, is my tech guy tonight. We are at the conclusion of a process of establishing a basic framework of development for the waterfront. Our assignment was to really take the waterfront, basically from about South Buckeye Street, almost to the quarry, and really start to understand what the opportunities were, to really identify the assets and opportunities that might be available as a long-term strategy for development of the city, bringing it to the water's edge. We've been at this for about six months, and one of the things that we should make clear is that this is a very dynamic process, and we have to understand that things will evolve and change over time. This is not a hard, fast plan. Some of the things you see tonight are things that are on the goals and expectations of the city as part of this process we went through. They also address some of the things that we know are maybe imminent in terms of some public and private development opportunities, and they address some of the initiatives that have been announced over the last year or so. We started out by having the city assemble a kind of an executive work group that included key stakeholders, city officials, and department heads. We had a number of work sessions. We went through a whole series of concepts and ideas, and sort of distilled those down into a series of goals. And I'll go through these very quickly. I know you've got a long agenda tonight, and I'm not going to take a lot of your time. This is a very detailed report that goes with the visuals you'll see tonight, and I'm sure those will be made available over the next few days or weeks through the mayor's office. But the goals really talk about the, establishing the extent and character of the public landing zone from north end of the Rock Island Bridge, which will connect to the Presidential Library, to the Junction Bridge proposal, which will also be pedestrianized, and on up to Main, Broadway, Bearing Cross Bridge, and beyond to the western lands, past the Bearing Cross Bridge. We wanted to take advantage of the development that has taken place over the last half dozen or 10 years on the south side, on the Little Rock side, including the Presidential Library campus, which will open next month, the development of the River Market District, and all of the development that's been occurring on that side of the river. We think there's a clear opportunity to start to look at the river as a two-sided development, as a two-sided destination for both local residents and for regional tourists, with some of the things that are happening between the arena and the museums, the Clinton Campus, the restaurant district in the River Market, some of the other proposals that are coming online. This is becoming a local tourist destination. And what we mean by that is, it's just as attractive to people who live here to come down to that area as it is drawing people from outside the area. We need to do both, but it really has to work for the local population first. So, we've taken that approach. Some of the other goals that were set out as part of this process is creating gathering and celebration places, expanding recreational opportunities on the river, developing a river-based attraction, which has already begun to take embryonic shape with the delivery of the submarine, encourage residential development, and create value for private investment. Early on in the process, out of those work sessions, we developed kind of this concept diagram that really broke the waterfront down into three distinct areas, with the main area of our attention being what we're calling the city core area, this red zone, basically between the Broadway Street Bridge and the Rock Island Bridge. How do we bring the city, which in many ways, as an urban experience, stops at Broadway, how do we bring that to the river? We've got the River Park now, but basically, we've got suburban development between here and the river. Large surface parking lots, individual buildings, it's not an urban townscape like this part of the city is, up along Main Street, once you get north of Broadway. So, how over time do we bring that to the waterfront, and really make this a vibrant and diverse place to live, work, and play? So, we're really concentrating that attention in this area, and thinking about assembling the assets that we have, and identifying opportunities to make this a two-sided waterfront. The trolley works towards that, the pedestrian bridges that are going to be in place work towards that goal. So, the framework is starting to be established, and we want to build off of that, to really start to focus attention on this side of the river and the opportunities that are here in the next five, 10, 15 years, to grow the city to the waterfront. To a less extent, we've looked at the areas to the west and the east of the downtown, and how we might address long-term development in those areas, and really have come to the conclusion, they're basically opportunities for either residential, additional riverside recreation, or some sort of institutional use, such as an educational campus or medical campus, something like that. We have large, open spaces, we want to retain a lot of that as open space over the long run, but also take advantage of the opportunities for additional housing development as the city grows over the next decades. As we got into this, and we're just going to briefly go through a number of these, we identified what we call catalyst projects. And we see those as really projects that become the building blocks for sort of jump-starting the development opportunities and realizing the vision for the waterfront. We characterize these as catalyst projects because they're either pioneer status, things that haven't happened over here, or they have the ability to sort of recast the character of an area. Most of what we've got in this zone, kind of between Broadway and the river, is sort of an area in transition, from older industrial lands to now sort of spot development with buildings and parking lots. It's an area in transition, and it's been in transition for a long time, but it's not always going to be that way. We've got to think about where it's going to be 15 years from now, and start to plan and help direct that in a way that meets the goals of the city. Each of these is going to represent different challenges and opportunities, and they're each going to require different levels of public support and investment. The first of these is an area that we're called City Landing. And City Landing is the zone between the Rock Island Bridge here that's going to connect with the Presidential Campus, and on beyond I-30 to the Junction Bridge that comes in at the arena. Both of these bridges are going to be pedestrianized over the next few years, and we see this as a key area, go ahead and go to the next slide, Jason. A key area between those two bridges that is a premier opportunity to bring the city and recreational opportunities to the water's edge in a more urban way. We've got the natural areas to the east and the west, and those are terrific, and they've already started to develop. This will give us an opportunity to bring the city in an urban way right to the water's This is a concept sketch plan, again, just to orient you to what we're looking at, and this is part of a much larger overall master plan, but we're taking it in pieces, and we'll show you how it all fits together at the end. Here again is the Rock Island Bridge, at this location, this is I-30, this is the Junction Bridge. You can just see the arena here, existing, the existing buildings are the gray footprints you see on the plan. So, what we're saying is that with this opportunity here to create some sort of a waterfront promenade, why don't you go to the next slide? Now, go back to that. This might be the place where we have our historic craft, the Razorback, the tug from Pearl Harbor. It's the place where we can build off the existing investment the city has made in the launch ramp, perhaps with a transient marina, so that people from other parts of the river can come to the downtown and essentially park their boat, and enjoy the offerings that are on both sides of the river. Visiting boats from other places, other cities, coming upriver or downriver, can come here and also dock. It might be the place where we have a fuel point, which is something which doesn't exist on this part of the river, and it's really key to enjoying the river as a boating experience for those folks that want to do that. We also identified this as the opportunity for a longer-term potential for the Inland Maritime Museum, which has been discussed and probably presented through the mayor's office over the last few years, with the Razorback being the first gesture in that direction. Why don't you go to the next slide? These are just some examples of some other cities around the country that have really taken back their waterfronts. Probably the most famous one is Baltimore's Inner Harbor. I've worked on this project for about 30 years now, and it's taken that long for it to get where it is. There was a plan done in the 60s, that plan has changed and evolved, but Baltimore is really reaping the rewards of having that plan in place, knowing that it's going to change and evolve as market dynamics change and opportunities are presented, but a place to start and a vision so people can buy into what is possible in this city. My company today is working on a project in New Jersey across from Philadelphia that's anchored by a minor league ball... anchored by a minor league ball stadium which is in place, the New Jersey State Aquarium, and a residential community that will be developed in between. This sort of taking back the river is happening throughout the country, and I think you're well-positioned to take advantage of that trend because you've got a tremendous resource here and basically more or less a clean slate of development opportunities over the next Chicago is starting to reclaim their river. One of the things that they've proposed is a boathouse, so that the public -- a public boathouse, so that the public can go there. There's concessions, there's a restaurant. They can rent kayaks and boats for the river, paddle boats. They hold festivals there. It becomes their point of access to the river recreation opportunity presented by the Chicago River. In Philadelphia, they've developed their own boathouse, a public boathouse in the famous Boathouse Row where all the sculling events take place on the river, the rowing events. So cities are starting to recognize this as a valuable resource in terms of the lifestyle of their cities, and are starting to reclaim these old industrial waterfronts for that As part of that development, we looked at the area that's starting to emerge from the Junction Bridge, which the rail bed now, which is down through here, just west of the arena, which is right here, being taken down. It's opening up several city blocks of opportunity, and we see that as a natural place to not only provide access to the river from the city, but also as a focal point for a retail dining and entertainment district that could evolve around the arena and some of the other uses which might take place on the river or the inclusion of a museum. Here's just some photos of that area. Here we are, we're in this building. Well, that's the City Services Building there. There's the arena. This is the rail bed before it came down. This is the old trestle which spans the Second Street, which has become a pedestrian promenade back over to Main Street, and we'll show how we think we can tie that in later on to a larger framework opportunity to pedestrianize the city. This again is a sketch plan, kind of expanding on that City Landing Zone we talked about. Again, I-30 here, the Junction Bridge here, the Main Street Bridge here. There's the arena. This is that area in question. The City Services Building is in gray there. The City Hall, which we're in, is right there. Much of this is open land. Over 90% of this is open land or surface parking lots. Ultimately, that's a resource that should be infilled, and that can happen over time and really create a vibrant urban environment from the existing kind of townscape down to the river. Some examples of some of the public environments that would be created around these opportunities, Reston Town Center in Virginia, which includes a really popular glass pavilion amphitheater that is a place where they have all kinds of festivals and flea markets and events throughout the year. Brings people into the downtown, supports businesses, supports restaurants, and makes those things possible. Eastern Town Center in suburban Columbus, Ohio, out in the middle of a cornfield. It's about placemaking. They created a great public environment. They built an infrastructure of restaurants, shops, and residential around that square. And today, it's a very vibrant and successful development where once there was really nothing. So they started from scratch. You don't have that problem. Here's a artist's rendition of what this area might look like, say, 10 or 15 years from now. Again, the arena, the Junction Bridge coming across. Here's Main Street Bridge, the city promenade, City Landing Zone we talked about with historic ships, the beginnings of a maritime museum, which might ultimately grow into something much grander, a what we're calling a transient pier for visiting ships like the Delta Queen. No real formal place for that to tie up today. They would come to a place if there was a reason to come, and there were facilities that could support that. Again, it adds to that vitality and diversity that we're really looking for in bringing this area alive. This is the bank building, the City Services Building. Everything else with a white roof is potential new things over the years which could infill all that vacant land. Why don't you go to the next one? The third area we looked at, what we're calling Stadium Square. There's been a lot of talk about the potential for the minor league ballpark to move. This is a site that has been purchased. There's been discussions. There's no guarantee it'll come here, but we were asked as part of this exercise to see how that might fit in and how it might be a catalyst for other development that would support that activity and build on the goals to create this vibrant waterfront district. Again, this is just a sketch plan, show how that might work. This is the Broadway Street Bridge. This is the hotel in the gray. Here's Riverside Drive coming along like this and going out towards Pike Avenue. This shows the opportunity to put a -- this is actually the footprint of the stadium that's in Memphis, so we put that down to see how it would fit on that site, what else might be possible. This particular site here and this site on the river are both city-owned parcels, so they might be part of a larger opportunity that goes along with a development like that. This also is a place where we identified the opportunity to do a pleasure boat marina. We wanted, in discussions, to get out beyond the areas between the bridges where it's a little bit more difficult to navigate, and we thought that this would make sense in a location to start to create value for this land that the city owns as residential opportunities. Again, keeping the park all the way through all the time, not infringing on that in terms of the recreational opportunities, but expanding as we go with each of these developments on the river, which would always be a goal of this process, is to keep building off of the river park. Again, this is that project I mentioned in Philadelphia. There's a minor league ballpark looking back at the city. It is an anchor to a pedestrian zone which comes across this part of the town and ties into the aquarium. Just go back to the plan for a second, Jason. One of the things that we'd like to see, if in fact this development was to happen, was to extend the Second Street Promenade, which is right here, which ties directly into the arena, and we'll show you that on a larger-scale map in a minute. So this enhances kind of the pedestrian-friendly zone that we have right across town with Main Street in the middle. This is an artist's rendering of what that site might look like as a night game. Again, you can see the ball field, obviously, with some development that would hopefully make this look like it had been here for a long time and is part of the city fabric with new residential and commercial opportunities. You can see the city skyline in the background. This is the Broadway Street Bridge coming across. We would propose that perhaps a stadium landing be developed as a place where water taxis and private pleasure boats and dinner cruises and those kind of things could tie up here, let people get out for a ballgame or an event at the stadium, and then pick them up later. So there's many ways you can start to appreciate this resource. And again, just to go back to that one second. Again, here's that Second Street Promenade coming in, which would tie in over to the arena right there. Just up from that is an area we're calling the City Marina and Waterfront Village. Why don't you go right to the plan? Again, this is Broadway Street Bridge, the marina opportunity on the river outside of the kind of constricted zone that we have very tight between all the bridges where we have some maneuver room, and creating value for this city-owned land that's in this zone here. And here you can see how the park would continue to come through and be expanded as it does. This is just an aerial view of that same area. This is the Bearing Cross Bridge. That area is to the right. This is an area we're calling the Gateway Center. It's the fifth of these catalyst projects that we identified as part of this process. Why don't you go to the next one? Just to orient you, Bearing Cross Bridge is right here. This is Riverside Drive. This is River Road now comes down, takes a sharp turn and goes along the river right here. What we're suggesting as part of a larger redevelopment scheme in conjunction with the Bearing Cross Community Development Group to create much-needed facilities on Pike Avenue that would be community-serving retail and services, and at the same time to open up this land with a new River Parkway, a continuation of River Parkway with bicycle and pedestrian paths which take you back to the existing parks and ultimately up to the quarry and beyond Burns Park, but also then to recast the existing River Road as a bikeway and pedestrian walkway along the river. So we'd get it on both sides, open that up, and create much-needed community-serving facilities which would start to reinforce redevelopment in Argenta and Bearing Cross and the downtown, which really needs those kind of facilities for residential to occur. And the kinds of things we're talking about, obviously grocery stores and pharmacies and those kinds of services, not a big shopping center, but a community-serving retail and services facility that serves both the existing community and helps justify investment in new development. Not going to go through this chart because nobody can read it, but we identified a whole series of challenges, opportunities, and hurdles that have to be overcome, and how each of those catalyst projects addresses the goals that we're outlining in the report early on. And again, anyone who wants to go through all this in detail, it'll be available. The real opportunity here is to step back while there's still, before development takes off, and it's going to take off here. You can see what's happened across the river. This is the next place that's going to happen. It's available land. It's got great visibility, great access. It's the only side where you can actually access the river from the land. You can't do it on the other side because of the channel. So if you're going to have recreation in the river and you're going to have boating facilities, it's going to happen here. That's going to create value for that land, and rather than having it happen piecemeal and without any vision of what that could be, this plan starts to address what it might be and how we can direct those energies in a way that's going to be positive for the city. We know over time it's going to change. Go ahead to the next one. We know over time this is going to change. It's, you know, market dynamics, opportunities that come along that we haven't thought of, but it's a place to start, and it's a place for the city to start to get a handle on this resource and really help you all map out the future of your city. 15 minutes.
Okay. Can we go back to those couple artist drawings real quick and just?
Okay. Tell us where you want to stop. You want to go to the stadium one?
Well, either one.
All right, well, let's stop there. We'll work our way up.
Where can you start buying condos over there? Do you ever?
It's a little bit beyond our scope right now.
Okay. You don't have any contracts in for the condos here?
Why don't you go back to the last sketch because it shows the whole waterfront from looking to the east. Now, one more, the other one with the marina in the foreground. This one, just to, you can see here how small this area really is. Here's that marina. Again, there's Broadway Street Bridge. You can see, there's the stadium right there. There's that Second Street corridor that we talked about, a continuation of the existing one. There's the arena right there. This is only a three or four-city-block area, and it really is pretty much an open book, a clean slate right now in terms of how a lot of people would look at development opportunities. There isn't anything quite like this that I'm aware of in many cities with, you know, with your kinds of opportunities.
Is there any other city that you know of that compares to ours?
In terms of the assets, probably not. Camden is, New Jersey, we're working on, was, even though they had the aquarium in place, they got Philadelphia on the other side of the water. The river's twice as wide. It has a terrible reputation, and there was a lot to overcome there. And the ballpark, what happened in Camden is that if this was the aquarium, then the ballpark came, and all of a sudden, people started to pay attention to what was going on. This is like the Ben Franklin Bridge tying into Philadelphia. The city is funding an aerial tram, which will be as much a fun ride as it is transportation, and all of a sudden, it's taking off. There's residential happening there. There are grocery markets circling that for a development opportunity, and it's going to explode. And compared to Camden, New Jersey, you're Miami Beach. And I don't mean to disparage Camden, New Jersey. It's our project. But it was tough. It was very tough. They didn't have the beautiful park and all the other things that you've got.
We have, not to disparage FedEx because they're a neighbor and are somewhat created here, but, you know, Bob sent us copies of the plan, and it didn't make it. So as soon as FedEx gets here tomorrow, thereabouts, we'll distribute it, hard copies of the plan to the members of the council, and we'll have some available, but right now, we're somewhat limited on that. Does any council member have any questions or observations?
Mayor.
Almiron.
What would you consider the trigger event that needs to occur on our riverfront to be the first domino that falls in this plan? What needs to happen?
I can only, you know, what's going to be the tipping point that just makes this explode? My guess would be, because it's the most likely opportunity on your horizon, that's not just a single isolated project on a single piece of land, would be if the stadium was to decide to locate here because of the adjacent land that the city owns next to it and the development opportunities to do a much bigger area in one blockbuster project.
Can you go to that picture?
Yeah, let's go back to that plan or maybe even the sketch, because what we're really talking about, this is 11 acres right now, which is owned and available for that and in preliminary discussions, and that has room for commercial development, residential development, obviously recreation. And then the city owns just off here. Why don't you go to the plan, Jason? Of the stadium plan? That one. So we were just, we were right here looking across the stadium and across the river, but the city owns this parcel and the city owns this parcel. So if you start to think about that as a major urban redevelopment project, you've got commercial, recreation, a destination attraction, residential, expanded park, a If that started to happen, you'd have people knocking your door down to be next in line to do something over here. I think that would be the tipping point for the river. It's going to be harder to do the arena square thing because it's commercial, retail, and they're all, they always follow, they never lead. So once they see all this activity happening and they see the opportunities, retail and commercial will follow, but they never lead. You know, everyone, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Inner Harbor in Baltimore, James Rouse, who developed Columbia Newtown, was always given credit for that. He was the big retail developer that came and did the pavilions on the waterfront. Well, that was actually one of the last things to happen there. The city came in and did a major science museum. The aquarium was in place, the World Trade Center tower, there was some residential, and a whole public waterfront environment plus a marina before any of that retail and restaurant stuff showed up. So here, we don't have that hurdle, because if there was some commercial, it would probably be related to the stadium and maybe some of these buildings. The rest of it's residential and recreation.
In, I know Alderman, Almiron. In your field of play, do you also know developers out there who are interested in different aspects of this or might be interested?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we do in our business is try to identify people to be players in a project, with public and private entities. It's not always easy to get all the pieces to fall into place, but there are entities out there looking for projects. I think something of this scale would interest a broader national audience than if it was just, say, a residential project.
To your question, Mayor, in each of the five zones that Bob talked about, we've identified private development opportunities, whether they be restaurants, residential opportunities, office, commercial.
I'll go ahead and introduce, Jason Spillman, of your firm. Yeah, I don't think we have.
Yeah, I think I did.
Did you? Okay. I'm sorry. Alderman, Barry?
Is this Miami Beach or is this South Miami Beach?
I'll leave that for you guys.
Alderman, what's your?
We're just facilitators. We're not going to tell you what it ought to be.
Mr. Gorman, if I may, I'm Murray Witcher. If we decide to pursue this plan, you know, what steps should we take to make sure or to ensure that aesthetically, everything blends together for this area and does occur in a quality manner?
One of the things that Mayor Hayes asks us to do, which we're going to be going over with him tomorrow, is a series of specific next steps that helps you get to a place where you can adopt this or something similar as kind of a master plan for this redevelopment zone, which probably needs, you know, a legal definition. zone, which probably needs, you know, a legal definition. And there are mechanisms that help you make sure that most of what you want happens. It's more than a zoning code. It's called zoning overlay in many places, but it has different names in different states, and it would be things that give you targeted land use, controls, design criteria, streetscape requirements, those kinds of things that sort of establish the framework. And then if someone wanted to come in, for instance, and I'm not an expert in this, but we're going to be putting you together with some for the legal aspects of it, if someone wanted to come in and do something drastically different from what you had on your plan, it would be difficult for them to do it. I mean, you can't automatically deny something, but there are mechanisms to sort of make it easy for them to do the right thing. And that, you know, that's not as articulate as I want to be on that, but I'm not really versed in all the legalities of that, but.
Alderman Witcher, I know, that's one of the things that I've been conversing with Bob about, and that is, how do we take this and put it in a form that this council can act on and facilitate working with the private sector in order to make this vision become reality? And obviously, again, it wouldn't be overnight. You know, places like, you know, the Harbor District have done it, our Historic District Commission, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Boles, you helped us put realities to this. I would imagine that things like that could be done on a broader scale that give us the opportunity to mandate certain things. And I guess I would equate it to that Historic District. Mr. Boles, you want to just comment real quickly?
You know, I guess, Mayor, one of the things I'm thinking about is every time I drive down Main Street and I look at the trolley barn, you know, I see what could have been a really attractive building on Main Street turned into a metal barn, you know, and true, you know, they put some brick on it, but it still is not the quality building that should be on Main Street. And with the potential that we have in this area, you know, I would really like to see quality development rather than metal buildings.
And I think, you know, obviously, Mr. Boles, we could have controlled that if we had chosen to do that. I think, you know, Mr. Alderman Yelling and several others advanced it a lot more down to, but it's sort of on Main Street. It's, the front of it's on Seventh, but we do have a lot of opportunity with that trailer and the Twin Cities Bank branch to address more of the Main Street kind of orientation. But, Mr. Boles?
All I was going to say was, we did that with the Main Street overlay, that's how you would address those issues of quality design. We have the planning commission to review that, and you're the variance body. And of course, several cases have come up, and we've allowed things to happen that we may not like later on. But the Main Street overlay, doing a design overlay was the way to go to regulate. Now we need to just realize the importance of it, stick to it, or expand it over to this area. We did stop at Willow, as you recall, when we were debating how far to take the design overlay, we stopped at Willow, and we probably should take that further to the west.
Most developers don't mind working within the confines.
Come back to the microphone.
Most developers don't mind working within the confines of a plan and development criteria as long as it's not a moving target and arbitrary. And this is the beginnings of starting to establish that kind of framework for development.
Well, I agree, Alderman Witcher. One of the things that it was certainly my interest to do, and I intend to pursue that, is to, first of all, after this is now before us, you know, to discuss it and then to look toward legislation that can, if this is indeed sort of what we feel, and I know this is a compilation of a lot of discussions, then put it in a form that we can facilitate the movement of development to go in accordance with this plan and to work with the city attorney's office, the planning department. I know Mr. Gorman has recommended a planner, I believe, is that the name of the gentleman or the field the gentleman's in that you and I were talking about?
They're economic consultants that work with cities in identifying public money that's available for infrastructure and how to leverage that with private development.
Yeah, I'm talking about in terms of, you know, facilitating, putting this into a legislative format that will give some comfort level to those who are going to invest, as well as the opportunity for us to guide in a.
There's lots of precedent for cities who have gained control of a development process for specific areas like this, and they can help you, you know, get those tools in place. Just for orientation, this is the overall here, and just, this is I-30 coming across. City Landing, the Arena Square area, that Second Street pedestrian zone to the Stadium complex, and then this is the Marina Riverfront Village and the Gateway Project we talked about. So they're kind of targeted, but intensely developed sort of catalysts that will start to impact overall character of the city over time.
Yeah, I would, what I would hope that we're able to do is to share this on a broader context over the next several months, and then perhaps the first of the year, if not earlier, but no later than the first of the year, to move into having a legislative approach to trying to quantify this vision, assuming it's what it is, and it's collectively agreed to, to do it in a way that would, as I mentioned, make it very easy for somebody to build in accordance with it, and perhaps much more challenging to do something that would not be in accordance with these directions.
This was exactly the process we went through on the south side of the river, which looked at the River Market District and ultimately the Presidential Campus. And a plan was done, and a series of visionary sketches were prepared, and kind of the goals were set out. And they've pretty much been able to follow that. Now, there's been a lot of little nuances and changes over time, but if you go back and look at that, the only real difference from that plan and what's there today, other than some small things, is that the arena is now on this side of the river, and originally it was on this side of the river.
Alderman Yelling? Oh, and then Alderman Vestal.
You go ahead.
Go ahead.
Bob, the area to the east of the Presidential Library site on our side, have you all done any preliminary studies on that?
We talked about that, but we felt it wasn't useful us to try to design, you know, the world there. I mean, it's all open land. It's like 60 acres of open land from Arkansas Avenue to the river, and rather than try to, I mean, we talk about it in a narrative way. And the same with the lands, you know, beyond Pike Avenue. Other than sort of opening that up and creating a resource which is needed and suggesting what that might look like, we think that really ought to be residential, some sort of campus development or both, and an expansion of the river park environment on down to the east. Those kind of three primary things. It's probably not a great site for commercial development, it's too far afield from both your heart and the River District area, which is really the regional core of that. And we think that those kind of uses make sense. The same with the lands to the west. I mean, it ought to stay primarily recreational and residential.
Alderman Yelling?
Hey, I'd like to say, it's very doable to have a design review committee or a design review commission based on an overlay district. I wouldn't use the planning commission, I would have a new group, but because there's too many different things that they have to do all the time, that mainly has to do with residential and other business areas in the city, that totally change and go ahead, to change gears and go into an area that needs specific design guidelines and specific regulations on what happens to the, as he said, to the public space, to the streetscape, things such as that. And the Historic District Commission is a good analogy, because that's exactly what happens there, although everything is geared towards the historic district, whether it be the Business District downtown, and there's design guidelines, and there's rules and regulations, but you can always do something a little bit different, and you take that to the board or the commission, and then, you know, they either approve it or don't approve it. Whereas the Historic District Commission does not end with the city council, it ends with the circuit court if somebody doesn't like what Historic District Commission says. You know, this could definitely, and that's because of state law, but, you know, this could end with the city council, of course, being someone to, you know, take the problem with. But it's definitely doable, and that's what needs to be set up. It needs to be set up with an overlay district, including all this, and it needs to be set up with rules and regulations and design guidelines, because that's what is going to keep people, that's what's going to make people invest, and it's going to protect their investment. And everything that's, whatever you say, you'll never make me believe any different, that everything that's been done on Main Street, and all the buildings that have been done, is because it's Historic District and because people did things knowing that somebody else wasn't going to do something wild and not in character and mess up their investment. But you have to make sure that you go, and this is my personal opinion, you have to make sure you go far enough, and in some things, we didn't, because there's a bright blue building, okay? And we didn't regulate paint color. And a lot of people think that the Historic District Commission does, and that we did not put that in the ordinance, or we didn't ask to put that in the, I wasn't on the city council then, but we didn't ask for that to be done, because we thought it might be just a little too much to ask for, but obviously, it's not. So, I mean, you have to think about these things, and try to think down the road and, you know, look at some of the problems, but especially in this, when you're going to have new construction, you're going to have people spending millions of dollars on any component of this, they want to know that there's going to be some design guidelines, which, you know, not necessarily to make it hard on them to develop the property and do what they want to do, but to protect their development in the property on what might go in next to it. And then you can show them that on the plan. So this is something that the city can definitely do. And, you know, some of the stuff going on in Little Rock, they don't have anything like that, it's just happening, and something could happen that wouldn't exactly be in character and, you know, maybe mess some people up, but I think it's needed, and I think it can definitely be done, and it shouldn't be hard to do.
Baltimore created a quasi-public corporation that became the master developer on behalf of the city. They were answerable to the mayor, and, you know, they couldn't do whatever they wanted, they had to work within the guidelines that were set up, but they promoted it, they would review proposals that came in from private developers, they would identify public infrastructure which needed to be funded for supporting things. So it was like a private development entity, but they were really a public body, but they were separate from the mayor and city council. And they did that on purpose, because they knew it was going to be a 25- or 30-year deal, and they didn't want them beholding politically to changing circumstances in that arena.
Alderman Gibson?
You know, it's amazing, you talk about a 25- or 30-year deal, but, you know, Alderman Thomas, it just seems like yesterday you were removing the shanties down there. And then, and we've seen it go from removing the shanties to being a grown-up field, or to seeing, you complained to the park department about what they've done down there, so they take a chainsaw and cut the parks department sign down, and said it wasn't theirs anymore. But I want to thank you and your group for putting together a very good plan, and what we got to do is find the financial wherewithal, public and private, to make it happen.
I don't think any of us would probably not confirm that, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, of course, Alderman Gibson talked about Shanty Town back there, I remember that when I was growing up, and, you know, I'm a lot younger than you are, Alderman Gibson, so.
Alderman Thomas, would you hit him?
But, you know, but I don't think any of us would deny, you know, that it was probably somewhat beyond our imagination, that what we see on this screen, you know, was much more than, you know, a fantasy. But I don't think any of us in this room, hopefully many of us at home, can't look at that and really see that happen with the, at least with the, you know, input that I've had, with the conversations I've had with different people who are looking at the downtown urban area, you know, with the beginnings of the, well, I don't need to go into my, you know, my Chamber of Commerce speech, but, yeah, I think we're excited about, I know I'm excited about this, I feel like the community is excited about this, we've all, as a city council, and as a community, worked very hard to make our downtown one of the ones that I think nationally is poised for even better things. So we thank you for bringing a reality. I love those drawings that, you know, whatever that artist did, you know, there are a few minor changes that I'd make, but outside of those, the dream, I think, was captured very realistically.
Change is good.
I add my compliments to Alderman Gibson, I look forward to visiting with you tomorrow and in the future as we make those drawings become reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me take a three-minute break.
Just four?
Just, just four?
Yeah.
They weren't in place, as I was saying.
Be like going to Salt Lake City.
Well, in DC.
In DC.
Oh.
That's why that's...
In the, this is one of the people, um, in this area.[401.13]
The Canine Good Citizen Award, where you take your dog and you have it tested under various circumstances to do certain things. And it clearly shows how predictable a dog is in strange circumstances. And I think that would be something that could be required for the bully breeds short of just a blanket ban, because there are bully breeds that are not pit bulls. And I think that needs to be recognized. And the other thing that kind of concerns me, and I'm just gonna make this real blunt and to the point. Last year, the issue was hybrid dogs. This year, the issue is pit bulls. And my question is, at what point am I gonna have to be here defending my German Shepherds? I'm a victim of violent crime, and I have German Shepherds specifically for the purpose of protecting me. And it is a real concern to me to see a pattern where last year, it was the hybrid breeds that were made illegal. This year, pit bulls. Next year, what's it gonna be? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. In support, are you in support of the legislation?
My name is James McCraw.
We got somebody? No, you don't have to sit down. We're just, we're looking for somebody in support. If there's nobody, then you'll be recognized. Support of the legislation?
I have some notes, and I might use them, but I want to say one thing in support of a few things. I do belong to the Little Rock Dog Training Club. I've been in several classes.
Name and where you live?
I'm sorry, Beth White on Glenmere, North Little Rock. And I too have trained my dogs. My dog, actually, the one that was attacked, I wasn't gonna talk about him, because this isn't about our dog anymore, but I'm gonna bring it up, 'cause see all the little pictures and stuff coming up back here? He's a therapy dog. I've just recently taken him to St. Luke's Respite this past week. He goes to other places, too. And I was glad to see that his temperament's okay following the attack. But, and I agree about the canine good citizenship test, he has that, too. But I don't think that that's enough. I just want to let you know. I know what all that is, and I know what dog training is about, and that's not enough. But what I want to say, and from my cards, and I know I don't have much time, this is to the responsible pit bull owners that are sitting here. I'm sorry that you're caught in the crossfire of this. I really am, 'cause I love dogs, too. But the truth is, that vicious pit bull dogs have a louder voice than you do. They've done more damage to this breed's reputation than you can do as a, that you can erase as a responsible pit bull owner. As a resident in North Little Rock, I can't be negligent about this issue anymore. And I can't be negligent, because my dog was attacked, and we've done some research, and now I see what's going on out there. I didn't know before this. And I thought about the word negligence, and thought, what does that mean if I'm being neglectful? And the two things I came up with with the word neglectful, in negligence, is to give little attention to or disregard. That's one definition of neglect. And the other one is to leave undone or unattended, especially through carelessness. And I don't want to be a part of either one of those two things. I don't want to be negligent, and we have to follow through on this. City Alderman, you have a chance to change, to pass a city ordinance that will give animal control and law enforcement the power to make this city safer. Mr. Grace and Mr. Suskey are the experts that you, Mr. Mayor, ask to write up this legislation. Changes and alterations to this proposal need to be cautiously approached. Facts need to be what determines your vote. And the overriding fact is, oops, is that cities and nations, communities across the nation continue to pass legislation to ban pit bulls, and this is increasing in number. My goal in this conflict, and it has, I wrote this up before I heard about the little girl that was attacked. My goal in this conflict is that no child or adult is ever attacked by a pit bull in North Little Rock again. A child is not equal to a dog. In the first meeting we had, I heard someone say, that my pit bull is my child. He's my daughter and my son. Well, a dog is property, and I know that, because if you look at the police report that we got after our animal from the North Little Rock Police Department, it's a property report. It's about our property. Our dog is property. It's not a person. These are not people. Children are children, and dogs are not people. And I want y'all to keep that in mind. I read something recently, and probably you know this story, about those starfish all over the beach. Have y'all heard that story? There's a whole bunch of starfish on the beach, and they're throwing them back in. And that's the way I kind of feel about this. Somebody might say, well, you know, you're wasting your time to try to get this ordinance passed, and to get it passed so that it'll have some bite in it. But you know, and then somebody said, well, you throw it back in, it doesn't matter. Well, it does matter to the one that was thrown back in. And that's the way I feel about this legislation. It's gotta be passed. We want to see it through, and I hope you all have ears to listen to the truth. And by the way, my dog was not killed, as the media reported at the last meeting, and we specifically told her he wasn't killed, that that was what was put on TV.
Thank you. All right, opposed?
My name is James McCraw. I live at 4933 School Street. This lady says your dogs are property? Well, that's like getting rid of your children, 'cause that's like my child. My wife can't have kids. And you say to get rid of pit bulls, that's like getting rid of my children there. And y'all say we need to get insurance on these things? But I see that's kind of ridiculous, when you need to keep the people that's responsible for the dog, not get insurance. That's like, that's like saying it's a car, or it's a house, or property. I say that's kind of ridiculous. And number two, I don't think we should get rid of them, 'cause the people that get out there and fight these dogs and do all this, they should be the ones responsible for it. They should be the ones doing that. You got all this equipment to take care of drugs and everything, how come you don't watch these people that are fighting these dogs? That's wrong. That's cruelty to animals. And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Supporting? Anyone supporting? All right, the rest of y'all opposed to the legislation? Okay, try to, yeah, I'm sorry. Are you supporting? I didn't mean to scare you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Bobby Taylor. I've had several incidents with, and I won't class myself as an expert on a pit or a pit look-alike. The way I determine them is the way their heads are all basically the same. And when they show you their teeth, and they got one foot raised up, hey, he's not one you want to pet. And I've had them two places. I got some behind the shop now, and I had some behind the house. Y'all know about them. But when I was from about nine years old up till I was about sixteen, I raised a bunch of shetland ponies for people, broke them. And it didn't take me but just a little bit to learn it. Neither end of them shetland ponies was safe. They either bit, or they kicked. Some of them never broke, so you know what happened to them. They made soap out of them. But I would like to see Billy Grace in the animal shelter have some way of marking these people that owns these dogs. I don't care whether he's a good dog, or he's a bad dog. Any animal is just like a human being. Over a period of time, his attitude changes. And you cannot look in his eye and tell when that is gonna happen. And I would like to see the animal shelter, I would take their opinion over anybody that's in here, of knowing whether that is a pit bull, or a look-alike pit, whether he's bad or he's good. But I would like to see the people, that's good or bad, be marked somehow or another, and that dog, to where they will be responsible for that dog. And if that dog happens to get out, that person can't say, well, that dog don't belong to me. I ain't never seen him before. That would never happen. And if that's be a pen fix for that dog, to where he would never get out, and the person that owns the dog would be the only one to have the key to it, before he'd be held responsible for that dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Now, we're gonna freeze the line. I'm not gonna deny any of y'all, obviously, the right to speak, but the rest of you are opposed to the legislation. You come up and introduce yourself, recognizing a lot's been said. If you have something to add, certainly we'd like for you to do that. Please try to avoid being repetitive and step up the microphone.
My name's Joanne Thompson. I live on 923 West 44th Street, here in North Little Rock. I've lived in North Little Rock since 1981. Somebody doesn't accidentally become a pit bull owner. I mean, when you pick up the pit bull, and you choose to own this dog, then you accept the responsibility for the reputation of the breed. I have a pit bull. He's an old pit bull. He's not ever harmed anybody, except for one person who tried to attack someone in my family. I've dealt with the animal shelter. They're very fair people. They, in North Little Rock, would know the pros and the cons towards any dog. But the main issue here is attacks, bites, teeth. To protect my dog and protect some child, or an adult, I would muzzle my dog. When he's outside, I would muzzle my dog. And I have control, I mean, when you're on a leash, you have control of them. And I'm a responsible owner, and if my dog hurts somebody, then it's mine responsibility. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Greg Jeffrey. I live in North Little Rock, over in Park Hill. And a little confession to make, I don't like dogs. I was dragged here tonight, more or less, by my fiancee to be kind of a rear end in the seat. You know, dogs chew your stuff up, they're smelly, they slobber. I like cats. They're hardwired for litter box. You don't have to pay attention to them all the time.
She may not be your fiancee much longer.
However, sitting here tonight, I've really kind of been moved to have to say something. I truly feel that this legislation is wrong. I feel it's immoral. I don't see the difference in banning a dog based on breed versus banning a person based on race. You know, some people may have a problem with that. I just, I just don't see the difference. You know, a dog was bred, here it is, here's its parents, well, you know, because it's a pit bull, it's out. I don't agree with it. I also don't agree that just because everybody else is doing it, we ought to be doing it too. Works for Jonesboro, works for Sherwood, whatever. Just because other people are doing it, just because everybody's jumping on the bandwagon, doesn't make it right. People, this is wrong. We're talking about banning an animal based on its genetics. You know, banning an animal based on its breed. And I believe what has made this country great, what's made this a great community, is people's accountability for their actions. I don't believe banning a breed is the answer. I believe the answer is making people accountable for what their dogs do. There are some people that should not own dogs. There are some people that should not own guns. There are some people that should not drive cars or have children. Go to the state fair on that last one. But that's, that's all I've got to say.
We appreciate it, and good luck in your future. We wish both of you the best. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm a little scatterbrain, but I will try to put my thoughts together on this. I'm Sandy Dolberg. I'm from Little Rock. I am a dog groomer. Although being a dog groomer does not make me an expert on dogs, I do know which ones that I have had the most trouble with. And it has not been a pit bull. I was attacked by my own dog. I was eight years old. It was not a pit bull. It was a Pekinese. I have the scar still. As a groomer, I was attacked by another Pekinese. I have the scar. It is my most recent scar. My own groomer was attacked unprovoked by a schnauzer. She has a scar. She was filleted open. To, on the Pit Bulls from RealPitBull.com, they are dog aggressive to a degree, but human aggression is something that was never meant to be part of the pit bulls authority. It was, any pit bull that they found a human aggressiveness towards was killed. They are a people-friendly breed. They are good with children. My boyfriend's pit bull, who I consider to be my stepdaughter, is awesome around children. They will pull on her face, her ears, her tail. She doesn't care. It's play to her. She enjoys it. They are a terrier breed, part of the terrier breed. They'll go after small animals. That is just like with the Jack Russell, a Parson Russell terrier, a Norwich Norfolk terrier, any of those. They were formerly used for bull baiting, stock work, farm dogs, and hunting. And in their history, they're, back then, they were aggressive to animals. The small animals. Not like cats, but more like gophers and moles. But they haven't, like I said, an unwavering loyalty to humans. Back during World War I, they were America's sweetheart, and Lucianus Peter, otherwise known as Petey, was part of the R gang family. Big old pit bull. Just spell a couple myths. They do not have locking jaws. You can take an X-ray and see that is not, it is not possible. They were bred to have the jaw strength when they were used for bull baiting.
One minute.
I was gonna say a few more things on the myths, but they are used for different things. San Diego's police force, according to PitBullsOnTheWeb.com, has pit bulls and uses them for drug busts. Even in Texas, one pulled up thirty, three thousand seventy-five pounds of cocaine at the border crossing at Hidalgo, Texas. One even, one saved his family from a cotton mouth. Pit bulls are UKC-registered. They can be shown. And my boyfriend's is show quality. I will admit that, but cannot be shown due to a defect in her mouth. She was missing a tooth. And I agree that they need to have CGC, they need to be tested. My AM staff has a certificate for obedience. Cleo will get hers eventually. We just haven't had the money to get hers certified that way. All my dogs, including my AM staff and my pit bull, will have the Canine Good Citizen Test taken. Therapy Dog International and the Delta Society Therapy Test to let them go around hospitals to be therapy dogs. That's all I have to say. Oh, I was gonna, can I say one last thing? There was a man earlier that talked about that if they taste blood, that's all they want. It is recommended by a, I cannot remember the website, but it's called BARF. It's the Bones and Raw Food Diet. And a healthy diet for them is a raw diet, and it does, sometimes there is blood with the food, and it does not make them any more apt to go for blood. I wanted to put that in there.
Thank you.
My name's William Peterson.
Where do you live?
Do what?
Where's your residence?
North Little Rock. And I grew up in Sherwood, and had this happen, the legalization.
Let me just mention this. I'm sorry right now, when I said freeze the line, I meant no more people will be, you know, allowed to get into it. So we're gonna stop right now, so I'll make sure we're clear. You're okay, but, you know, the gentleman that just came in, but right now, the line, excuse me?
The victim's back there.
I didn't say that. Gentlemen's, the word I used. Yes, sir. All right, but from now on, only those in line now will have three minutes or less. Yes, sir.
I grew up in Sherwood, and I seen this law pass a while back. I probably was in sixth grade or so. I'm twenty-three now. And I own a pit bull terrier. My best friend, Alan Finch, was killed in a car accident on Highway 10, May 22nd this year. Other friend of mine breeds blue pit bulls. And I got this book, Owner's Guide to Pit Bull Terrors, upon getting the dog, day of the funeral, from my friend Alan. And I have something to keep my mind off of, losing my best friend. But this guy, who's got this book published, he's hit the nail on the head on everything he's said about it. And it says in here all kinds of stuff about, all right, the ideal owner is someone who's loyal, his dog and the breed. He knows that owning a dog, a lifetime commitment. You know, what I'm here for is just saying that I don't think you should ban it. I think there should be a regulation on it. My dog, I've got a five-year-old daughter. My old lady is, her, she's been attacked by one, by her ex-boyfriend, that was trained and, you know, maliciously made up. Ninety percent of people out there who own pit bull terriers have them for the wrong reason. And I just feel like this, something needs to be done about, you know, if you want to own one, you should have to go through a process of, they should check your house out, you know, see if you have a stable environment, see what kind of person you are, personality, and just, that's pretty much all I got to say. I'm kind of on the spot here, and everybody's looking at me. But he, my dog has never, ever growled at a sign of aggression towards anybody, any human. I don't let people wrestle with him. I've taken him around dogs, all my other friends' dogs, you know. Upon getting that dog, I knew it was a responsibility, and that, you know, if you're gonna get the breed, you know that you, that's what you've got signed up for. So I taught him at a young age, you know, socialized him, and I have to say, everybody else's dogs are the ones that ready to start a fight before mine is. And it's just, they're not, they're not what they're portrayed to be out, you know, in the news. If they're like that, it's because that's the way they're raised, or it was bad breeding, you know, people breeding them without papers and having a tight bloodline. Mine's registered, I got papers, you know. I'm good. I'm done. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cindy McCraw. I live on Healy Street in Rose City. I'm a pit bull owner. Three, as a matter of fact, my kids. My husband and I have seven kids. Pit bulls are only mean if you make them mean. If you train them to be mean, they'll be mean. If they attack, it's because they were taught to be mean. We went to a car lot to buy a truck. A child came out from behind, attacked my son. Why are chows not banned? Why are not, y'all just picking on one breed of dog? They're only mean if you make them mean. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Fast man singing. Hey. All right. My name's Jonathan Warren. I'm from Tresport, Arkansas. I don't live in your town, but I come to your town and do business at your pet stores and stuff like that. I own an American Bulldog. He's a hundred and twenty pounds. He stands that tall. He gets confused all the time with pit bulls, but he's not a pit bull. You know, you've received information on him, and hopefully, you'll go through and read your information. You've got a big decision on your hands. I wouldn't want to make it. You've got to weigh the good and the bad from both sides. Nobody wants their dog taken, but nobody wants to see a child laid up. But banning a Pacific breed of dog just can't be right. You know, Muslims blew up the towers. We can't kick them all out of the country. You know, we've done something like that during World War II, when we got all the Japanese and rounded them up. Was it right? No. Will it be right in the future? No. There's gotta be a line drawn somewhere. Pass legislation, so your dog has to be microchipped. They've got those. You put it in the dog, they scan it, there it is. This person owns that dog. You can't say, that's not my dog. Tattoos, that can be recorded. You can tattoo your dog. You can trace that dog. There's other things you can do besides stopping the total breed of that. That's not right. It's discrimination. It's profiling. It's everything we have determined to be wrong, and you're trying to do it now. The decision's on y'all. Please make a good one.
Appreciate it. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this public hearing. Mr. Grace, one of the things that I would, you know, like before the next council meeting, you know, is I think there's some questions that have been raised. I don't know that I've got the answers with regard to the different breeds, the four or five breeds that were identified, and whether or not all of those are ones that are, ones that are concerning you. You know, I'd like, I'd like for you to take into consideration as well as those of the department, the comments that were made, and then, you know, I'd like to certainly visit with you before the next council meeting. As I mentioned before, and there hadn't been an objection by the council, we will try to deal with amendments at the next meeting, and then the following meeting, we will permit comments from the audience. Again, I encourage you to please feel free to come back, but, you know, we are seriously deliberating this issue. Take the opportunity to send us information. You can do it through the city clerk office if you'd like, and we'll deal with this without necessarily having a public comment section in the next meeting, but then the final meeting, when we vote on it, will permit brief comments from, from the people in the audience. With that, I think we're ready to go to the regular agenda. I'll take, I'll take about a one-minute break for any of you who might want to leave. You're welcome to stay for our agenda, but as I mentioned, there won't be any further action taken on the pit bull legislation tonight. So with that, I'll take about a one-minute sitting recess for those who might want to leave. Reconvene this meeting, and ask Ms. Whitby, can we go to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Resolution 0474, Mayor Hayes.
We, I think we've still got some, family athletics are going on, so I'm gonna hold that one.
Resolution 0494, Alderman, Yilding, and Berry.
We're gonna hold that, and I'll make some comments. It's public comment time. We're gonna hold that for right now.
Ordinance 0456, Mayor Hayes and Alderman Gibson. Ordinance 0461, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson, and Berry.
Can we read that at this time?
Sure, we can read it.
This is an ordinance creating in North Little Rock Municipal Code, Section 1046, prohibiting pit bull breeds or dogs within the city of North Little Rock. Second reading.
Okay, now, I think Alderman Gibson wants 0456.
Read and held. I'm sorry. Way too far back from the microphone.
This is an ordinance creating and establishing the North Little Rock Residential House and Design Review Board. Second reading.
All right, now let's go to new business.
Resolution 0495, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Onyx Corporation to participate in the tax-backed program is authorized by Arkansas Code 1542706D of Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0496, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant to the North Little Rock Fire Department from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security of preparating funds for the thirty percent local share.
The adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0497, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Okay.
I think we want it called.
A resolution authorizing the payment of funds to the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department for construction of the Bridgeway Extension Road Campground Lane to the new Crystal Hill Road.
Move for adoption. Second.
On, on discussion.
I want you to explain to us what we're doing exactly there. I think.
When we, when we, right now, under construction is phase one of the Crystal Hill Road improvements that go from essentially Mall Mel, the Mall Mel exit, to just before you get to Wild River Country. Barely significant improvement. That improvement, by and large, I won't say cut off, but certainly increased the transit, or the weave, we'll say, of people accessing Central Arkansas Christian School and all those facilities that are on the, on the west side of Interstate, what is it, 430?
430.
That is in that area. So, you know, this is not, you know, does not open up what is now a roadblock, but it certainly, for the transit of those families, for the transit of those people who live